Good evening, Rattlers. My name is Tangela Richardson, Chair of the Communications Committee for the Northeast Region, and I will serve as your moderator for this evening. Welcome to our first conversations with Courtney Gochet, which is being broadcast on Zoom and Facebook Live. It is the first in a series of conversations held by the Athletic Director to bring you up-to-date information on what's happening with our Rattler football team and other FAMU sports, and the amazing things that are happening within the FAMU Athletic Department. We are very delighted and honored to have the first series, Conversations with Courtney, happen in the Northeast Region. We will now open up our program this evening with a prayer from the Northeast Region Chaplain, Mr. Floyd S. Patterson. Floyd?
Good evening, all. Let us pray. Lord, today we welcome you. May this agenda reflect your spirit of love and cooperation, whom only you can provide. For those that are in the sound of my voice and those that are not, we know that your grace is sufficient. We thank you for delivering to the faculty of Florida A&amp;M University, its newest members, Athletic Director Courtney Gochet and Coach Willie Simmons. The entire membership of FAMU NAA globally wishes them good health and much success as they move to a new horizon. May that Rattler spirit of love, commitment, loyalty, with excellence, proud caring engulf their souls. And our anthem be that, that a rattler will strike, strike, and strike again become their new anthem. God, we pray that you place your shield of protection in front, behind, below, and above each of them. Please, God, surround them with supporters with godly and moral values. Keep their mind in perfect peace as they pursue new challenges at the task at hand. We love you. We lift you up. We praise your holy name. You're worthy to be praised. Regardless of your name, we thank you again. The opportunity to say, "Thank you, God." Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Floyd, for that wonderful and sincere prayer. Now, I would like to introduce to you our Northeast Region's Vice President, Artisha R. Polk. Artisha is FAMU's National Alumni Association Life Member. She's an annual donor to FAMU. She's the FAMU's NAA Corresponding Secretary, 14th Northeast Regional Vice President, Chief Executive Officer of the Region. She is the active member of the Washington DC Chapter, native Marylander, graduated from FAMU with a bachelor's degree in biology. Now, I present to you, Artisha.
Good evening, Rattlers. So glad to have you here today. We're excited that A.D. Gochet and Coach Simmons are here with us today. So, on behalf of all of the members, officers, and alumni of the Northeast Region, from Maine to Virginia, welcome. Welcome to tonight's conversation with Courtney. So, I also want to give a special shout-out to our fearless leader, the 18th National President of the FAMU National Alumni Association, Colonel Gregory L. Clark. And so, here in the Northeast Region, we have a number of things going on. We just finished our scholarship application period. We'll be giving scholarships to students from the Northeast Region, as well as we'll be hosting our first virtual annual meeting on August 16. Well, I think we're ready to talk about sports now. So, we're going to hand it back over to hear from my great speakers. The Northeast Region is excited about continuing that Rattler spirit here in the Northeast Region because Coach Simmons, as you know, when the Rattlers come to town, Northeast Region come up, show up, and show out at our games. And so, we hope to be able to continue that spirit here in our region, and we look forward to our conversation with you.
Thank you, Artisha. As you all know, in the early part of June 2020, there were news reports that Florida A&amp;M University Board of Trustees voted unanimously for the university to leave the Mid Eastern Athletic Conference, which is known as the MEAC, and join the Southwestern Athletic Conference, known as the SWAC. FAMU's membership in the SWAC will be effective for the 2021-22 school year. Our featured guest this evening is none other than Courtney Gochet, FAMU's VP and Athletic Director, and the host for Conversations with Courtney. Courtney, can you just walk us through what it means to leave the MEAC and to go to the SWAC, and what that means for the Northeast Region? What do we have to anticipate going into the SWAC, Courtney?
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Tangela. We appreciate you all inviting us to have the first of conversations with Courtney. And, Artisha, we appreciate you for all the hard work that you've put in and obviously, your commitment to the National Alumni Association. So, Coach Simmons and I, and I know he'll do this for himself a little bit later, but we're so grateful to be here with, with the Northeast Region to talk about the future of FAMU athletics. So, to jump right in with two feet, you know, we talk about the conference realignment. And for us, one of the very first things that we did in our time on the Hill was to start to really evaluate our financial picture, you know, how it related to the student-athlete experience and all of those type of things. One of the challenges that we faced, like most other HBCUs, is really the absorbent travel expense. You know, those are one of the larger expenditures on an athletic department's budget. And so, we looked at some of the unique opportunities we had, had some pretty candid conversations with the MEAC about, you know, what the future of the conference would look like, and, you know, if there was conversations of expansion or any capability for us to reduce our travel, you know, for all 16 teams. It's not just a football decision. A lot of people correlate with football, but it's really all of the other 15 other programs that we have as well. And we commissioned a study, and obviously, we looked at some conferences that would provide us some opportunities to reduce expense and then also generate more revenue. And we landed with the Southwestern Athletic Conference. Obviously, when you start thinking about the blue bloods of HBCU athletics, names like Ramblin' State, Jackson State, Southern with the bands and all of the pageantry that comes along with that, but very similar fan bases. And the more we kind of study, you know, the results of our comprehensive study, it came, you know, clear where we really needed to be. Now, we have Rattlers all over the country. And so, obviously, in the Northeast, that's a quadrant that, that we certainly, as Artisha put it, we show up and show out. And so, this move does not necessarily mean that we won't get back up to that quadrant of the country. There are still some MEAC peers that we have that we hope to, you know, play from a non-conference perspective every blue moon. And obviously, you know, we do have 16 programs. And so, as we have opportunities to cross-pollinate our schedules, I certainly think that we will be back in the Northeast quadrant, you know, for gains and opportunities, and opportunities to celebrate with our Rattlers that are in that quadrant of the country.
Very, very good. And I know that you guys are looking to continue the legacy, especially with the bands, moving to the SWAC. So, that's really the great anticipation there that we can look forward to. But I think one of the things that we are also contending with is that, that brand awareness here in the Northeast Region, where we actually use the football games to be a part of that brand strategy. So, now, we're looking at recruiting students, continuing to the legacy of going to Florida A&amp;M University, the highest of seven hills. So, what does that look like for us in terms of recruitment? Students, recruiting the best and brightest students to go to FAMU from this region?
Absolutely. I think that this move really actually opened up a couple of corridors for us. And so, to your point, you know, the footprint of the MEAC, you know, it encompasses the Northeast. But now, we really have opened up an opportunity to get into some places that we haven't. And so, I don't think that it'll minimize our recruitment efforts in the Northeast because, to your point, I'm pretty sure, you know, our brand ID is really strong. And I could certainly see us playing in DC again. I can certainly play, see us playing, you know, in New York, in Boston, or Chicago. And so, those are all things that, quite frankly, I think will be on the horizon. To your point, the pageantry that the bands bring. Now, I can see a lot of municipalities and cities now helping us and putting money on the table to bring those brands to their city. And that's ultimately one of the reasons why the transition to the SWAC was important to us, because now, we're connecting ourselves with those perennial brands. And now, we can say, we can go anywhere in this country and have our own classics. And that's special. And again, the FAMU brand stands alone, but it gives us now the flexibility to really control the narrative for us and to also monetize that. And so, I certainly, I'm excited about the potential. You know, matter of fact, I was speaking to a delegation about bringing the Rattlers to Yankee Stadium. Why not?
Yeah.
And so, there's some unique opportunities for us. And the future of this program is so bright. And, you know, Coach Simmons, and I'll let him chime in on some of this stuff because he's no stranger to the SWAC, but he's seen firsthand the power in the brand ID of a lot of those teams.
Coach Simmons?
Good afternoon. I didn't know VP Gochet was leading me into that conversation, so I was going to wait. But like you said, it's an honor to be on this afternoon with everyone. Happy Juneteenth to everyone on the call. And it's exciting times here at Florida A&amp;M. And so, to just, do you want me to follow up on that question? Or do you have a more specific question for me, or?
No, just follow up on that question, what he was saying in terms of the pageantry and being able to brand ourselves, continue to brand ourselves in the, in the Northeast, and especially going to Yankee Stadium. I mean, who wouldn't want to go to Yankee Stadium? So, yeah, if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Exactly. Well, one of the things, obviously, you know, when VP Gochet got hired, we had extensive talks about the direction we wanted to take this athletics program, particularly football, for me. And when we looked at the possibilities of joining a conference like the SWAC, you know, we looked at those, those natural rivalries. The Southwestern Athletic Conference has led the nation in FCS attendance, 42 of the last 43 years. And in many, in many instances, it's not even close. I think outside of the Florida Classic, they're home to the largest classic games in black college football. The Magic City Classic in Birmingham gets close to 60-plus thousand fans every year. The Bayou Classic, obviously, is 50,000 to 60,000 fans every year. The Classic in Dallas, that Prairie View and Ramblin' participate in, over 50,000 fans. So, now, you bring our brand to that conference and the strong home and homes, potential home and homes that we can, that we can schedule, makes for a lot of revenue, not only for our program, but for programs in that conference as well. And to your point of recruiting, I think the thing that's unique to us or the thing that is exciting for us is that, you know, winning obviously makes recruiting easier. And so, when you go to a conference and you have those strong bonds and those ties and those rivalries, and we're able to recruit a high caliber student athlete, and we're able to take our band with us to more games and to give us a competitive advantage, and we win more, then it stretches our brand more nationally. It's already a national brand, but it just continues to grow that brand. And so, we talk about recruiting the northeastern region, the Midwest, and even as far as California. We've had extensive talks with coaches out in California about those student athletes coming to Florida A&amp;M. And so, the more we can be on a national stage with our football team and with our band and other sports that, that we feel will grow because of this move, we think it gives us the opportunity to recruit a more national caliber, not only student athlete, but student in general. So, we're excited about this move. We think it, the benefits far outweigh the, I guess, the naysayers that wanted to kind of remain where we were. But we just feel it was a perfect move and a perfect time for us to continue to grow our brand as we, as we move into this new era.
Well, that's definitely exciting to know that we can recruit on the West Coast and Midwest and really all over the U.S. And I think that's what people really want to, to know how big this program is going to be for us, moving from the MEAC to the SWAC and, and playing against schools like Ramblin' that has a storied football history program and continuing to build upon our legacy here at FAMU on the gridiron. So, we definitely want to continue that legacy as well. Are you saying that there's going to be possibly another classic game for us, for FAMU in the SWAC? Do we have to look forward to that in addition to what we do with what we've done with BCC, Bethune-Cookman College in the past?
Well, I think we're going to definitely have some options. And so, one of the things that, again, I mentioned it earlier, just the name ID that some of the peers in the SWAC will bring to the table. You know, you partner those brands up and say, hey, we want to go to any city in the country and be able to draw and to generate revenue because we've got a fan, we've got fans all over. We've got alumni all over. Again, I think when we literally, the next day after the announcement, I probably had, you know, I know I had Detroit on the phone. I know Chicago is kind of blowing us up. We've had some conversations about DC and New York, Charlotte, and again, even Las Vegas. So, so people really, a lot of the woodwork have come to the, you know, come to the table and say, hey, wait a minute. We need your brand here, and we're going to incentivize it. And so, you know, we don't necessarily know today what those consortiums will look like, but it has certainly opened us up for more opportunities to get around the country. And honestly, you know, it's actually going to give us a revenue generating model to where we might even be able to get out of playing, you know, guaranteed games against Power Five opponents. You know, who obviously, you know, you kind of go there to get a check and they beat up on you a little bit. But my goal is to position ourselves where we're not dependent on that. We're self-sustaining based off of games that we own or games that we can control. And that's really the direction that we're going to go long-term. But, you know, again, this was the first step to position us to do that.
Okay. Well, we know that there are a lot of people that are on Facebook Live as well as on Zoom that would like to engage with you all, you and Coach Simmons, just to weigh in on this, from the MEAC to the SWAC and what that means. I will say that we are not going to be able to do as much trash talking as we've been doing to Howard University, Morgan State University, and Delaware State. So, we'll have to find new ways to trash talk in the SWAC. So, we'll open-
You clearly haven't been following Facebook because there's been a whole lot of trash talking already. It's bad. I tell, I say this, and I love, I love my time in both the MEAC and the SWAC. You know, the MEAC is more of the, you know, in the Northeast. I mean, we got some class, you know, we got some decorum. It's rough in the SWAC. I mean, so, we got, we got, we got to be ready to ramp our trash talking up a little bit because they're going to come for us, just know that. And actually, the name of the, one of the chat groups is rough in the SWAC. That's literally the name of it. And so, trust me, we'll have no problem forming some new trash talking ties between Southern, Ramblin', Jackson State, Allcorn State. I mean, you name it, there's some big-time trash talkers. So, that won't be a problem at all.
Okay. All right. We'll hold you to that, Coach Simmons. So, we still have this lively debate going on. So, if you're on Facebook Live and Zoom, please place your questions in the Zoom chat and Facebook Live chat, and we'll definitely make sure that you get a chance to engage with Courtney Gochet, Conversations with Courtney, and Coach Willie Simmons. So, we have a question. It is from the SWAC Commissioner McClellan. He mentioned that adding FAMU, this is from Marcus Green, and he said that adding FAMU will enhance leverage to renegotiate media. We might even be able to get out of the media agreement with ESPN as well as regional TV. Could you elaborate on the differences he is asserting versus what is currently under contract in the MEAC?
Yeah. So, we'll talk about kind of revenue generating opportunities, and this is one of them. So, ESPN is a proud partner of both the MEAC and the SWAC. I think one of the other differences that we looked at when it became apparent that the SWAC was really our destination is there are other opportunities that the league have created in the TV and marketing spectrum, such as regional TV deals. And so, you know, ESPN kind of comes in, they mandate what games they want, but they also leave opportunities, you know, for you to come in and, you know, monetize regional TV opportunities or other sports, non-revenue generating sports, such as baseball, softball, volleyball, et cetera. And we had challenges with that in the MEAC. You know, some of those things were prohibited, you know, from the league because it allowed them to really kind of control that content. In the SWAC, the autonomy's at the school level. So, if, if we wanted to go out and strike up a deal with Xfinity or AT&amp;T that says, okay, ESPN's going to broadcast these three or four games a year, but we're going to broadcast all of our games that aren't televised and all those type of things in these other platforms. And so, we will have that ability in the SWAC. But again, we talked about those perennial names, all right? So, in this league, it's very similar to the SEC, all right? And I use that comparison for a couple of reasons. The SWAC's headquarter office is also in Birmingham. So is the SEC. They're literally right up the street from each other. But the footprint is also very similar. And so, if you think about the major names that's in the SEC, okay? And you look at this FCS model, think about the perennial names in now the SWAC, FAMU, Ramblin', Southern, you know, these are the names that get people's attention immediately. And so, now, you have opportunities to kind of go back to your, you know, your TV, your meteorite holder and say, wait a minute, wait a minute. We've got all the juice. So, now, it's time to really come to the table because, again, Coach Simmons mentioned it earlier. You're already leading FCS attendance. We've got better attendance than Conference USA and Sunbelt schools. And so, for us, this is, again, just an opportunity for us to look at it holistically. It's not a one- or two-year approach. You know, again, I certainly think that our financial model and leverage at FAMU is significantly different in five years from now. And that's ultimately what this decision was about.
Wow. Okay. We have a lot of questions coming in. So, the next question is, there's two parts. Will there still be a Florida Classic? And then, what will the future revenue incentives for student athletes be with joining the SWAC? So, where, will we still have a Florida Classic?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the Florida Classic's not going anywhere, okay? So, we have, you've got a number of conference games that you play every year, and then you have a certain number of non-conference games. So, we're going to make sure that the Florida Consortium's not going anywhere. Bethune-Cookman is our rival. That's, that's not going to change. That game's not moving. You know, so, we feel really confident in that. But just to give people that assurance, the Florida, you know, Bethune, that game, we're going to beat up on them a little bit for the foreseeable future, okay? You know, and, you know, there's some speculation actually out there about that, but we won't, we won't, we won't do that today. But, but, you know, again, we brag differently at FAMU, and we lead the way. So, so that's what it's all about. But we will have a home football season this year. You know, I know there's been a lot of speculation about that. All indications look really good for us. And obviously, this is, you know, kind of breaking news. We've tested 20 football players and six coaches last week, and no cases of COVID-19. And so, you know, out of those 25 individuals, which is the first ones that we've tested, which is a good sign for us. And so, we're excited about bringing our student athletes back, football in particular, by July 1st. So, we're preparing to do that. It's going to be a little bit different. But what we're telling people is, at this time, it's very, very critical that you buy your tickets, that you invest into the Rattler Athletic Fund because it is going to be a challenging year just with all of the moving parts that COVID-19 has created, not only for athletics, but the university. And one of the things that's unique about athletics is, again, we have 329 student athletes that we have to pay their tuition and their books and their housing regardless of COVID-19 or not. And so, that's why it is really, really important that, you know, our alumni really step in to close the gap right now and help us position ourselves to be successful. But right now, everything is a go. It will be different. You know, we may not have 30,000 people at homecoming. It may be a smaller version of that. But again, all the indications right now look like we're going to, we're going to play our games. We're going to have the Florida Classic. We're going to have homecoming until further notice. So, you know, but again, we are on, I know that's been a hot topic. And Coach Simmons has committed to winning the championship this year.
Yes.
So, Coach, we'll let you chime in and talk about the season a little bit.
Well, you already put it out there, so that much I can say the backpedal, so. But no, we're excited. You know, we're looking forward to playing this season like Courtney, like VP Gochet said. And until we hear otherwise, we'll force steam ahead. And so, we have a comprehensive plan. I do commend the administration, Dr. Robinson, his team, VP Gochet, and the athletic administration for really putting a solid plan together, one that makes us feel comfortable as coaches and student athletes to know that we're doing everything we can to keep everyone safe. And so, we're phasing our players back in, bringing them in in smaller groups so that we can test them and isolate them and be able to, you know, contact trace a little bit better as opposed to bringing 100 guys back at one time. So, if we can get to a good place where everyone is negative, we can resume or start normal activity, so to speak. And, you know, a lot of momentum from last season, obviously. We lost a couple of pieces from last year's team that, you know, had the best record in black college football. But we filled those pieces, we fill with quality young men, you know, from high school all the way up to transfers. We had the highest-rated recruiting class in the HBCU football, you know, number 10 in all of FCS football, which is probably the highest that we've been ranked in some time now. A lot of three-star student athletes that are coming to us. One of the most notable ones is the son of a Major League Baseball Hall of Famer, you know, King Griffey Jr.'s son is joining us this fall. So, you know, a lot, a lot, yeah, it is exciting. Well, some other reasons too that could go into. But, but no, just the opportunity to get back on the field. Obviously, our spring practice was abbreviated because of COVID-19. And so, it feels like forever since we've been able to really get out and work. So, we're looking forward to it as a coaching staff. Our players are chomping at the bits to get back out there. And I think, you know, as we all know, you know, sports is kind of that, that feel-good thing that I think we need right now. You know, there's a lot of unrest in the country right now with everything going on from COVID-19 and all the social injustices that we as African-Americans face in this country with some, many of the issues with, you know, police brutality. And, you know, just to be out there and see, you know, a football game and just feel good about us whooping up on someone else, you know, again, just kind of brings that, that Rattler spirit back. So, we're looking forward to being able to represent this fine institution in a first-class manner. That's something that we're very, very serious about here. And I'm just thankful that I have an administration that gets it, an alumni base, a fan base that gets it. And with all of us together, I really believe we can be a voice nationally because I think, more so than ever, people are going to look to us to see how we respond in this tough time. So, I'm looking forward to leading the charge in that endeavor.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Quick, just to kind of put a cap on that. I know some people say, well, I haven't renewed my tickets yet. So, again, if, if you're uncomfortable coming to the stadium but still want to support, you know, you can, you can either purchase that ticket and you will get a credit for next year if the season is canceled. Or again, just say, hey, look, I'm not comfortable coming, but make a donation to the Rattler Athletic Fund. You know, right now, we, we're in the middle of the All-In Campaign that is directly geared to the student-athlete experience, giving them first-class facilities and all those type of things. And, you know, right now, so far, in four months into that campaign, we had three programs that didn't even have lockers, locker rooms. So, you know, we've been able to give our baseball program a place. Our women's track- So, you know, we've been able to give our baseball program a place, our women's track a place to go. We're renovating the football field house that hasn't been touched in 37 years. And so again, and through the uncertainty, we still need your support. So if you're not going to buy tickets and all those things, still continue to give, we greatly appreciate it.
Okay, we have a lot of questions that are coming in, so this is really great. This is from Jeff and this is to Courtney. Can we get a company to sponsor Bragg Stadium like North Carolina A&amp;T did with BB&amp;T Bank? I'm sure BB&amp;T Bank paid a pretty penny to get their name on Aggie Stadium. It is now called BB&amp;T and Aggie Stadium.
Absolutely. So this is some of the things that we are trying to do. Now, I'll say this, when you go into any major corporation or, you know, company to start to solidify and make what we call major gift ask, they do their research as well. They look at, what's your rate of alumni giving? You know, what are, where are some of the opportunities? You know, does the facility look and resemble something that we want to attach our name to? And quite frankly, we've got to get our house in order to be positioned to do that. Are we working on it? Yes, it's not going to happen overnight. But I want a lot of Rattlers to understand the process associated with that. We do need ambassadors, we have a lot of Rattlers that are C-suite executives. It's going to require a lot of them to say, you know what? I've got to do this for my school, let's create those connections. Reach out to the athletic director. Again, we, before COVID-19, you know, we're excited to hop on the plane and go meet some Rattlers and talk businesses, talk about those opportunities. And so we are, matter of fact, we've got probably somewhere in the neighborhood of seven to eight pitches out to major corporations right now. But again, those aren't guaranteed, you know, you've got to have a little bit of luck and a little bit of strategy associated with that. But those companies do like to identify themselves with winners. But understanding that alumni giving is a big piece of that. Again, how your university supports it, you know, there's no secret that we graduate the best and the brightest. And so we've kind of used that as part of our moniker in our pitch to these corporations. Not only are we champions on the playing surface, but we're also champions in the academic arenas. And I'll be honest with you, we're going to pour a little bit of gasoline on that right now because the timing couldn't be better. But we need a lot of Rattlers who are working at these companies, who may have connections, reach out. We will certainly prepare ourselves, go visit and share our story for some of these unique opportunities to do so.
Thank you. This question is for Coach Simmons. It says that the, every sport has an influx of contacts from potential student athletes. Where do you see that happening with the transfer of student athletes from PWIs based on current events going on in the US? Do you see an influx of black student athletes transferring now with everything that's happening in the, around, in the US and around the globe? That they're transferring from PWIs to HBCUs?
Well, I answered that question, I think, in the chat, but transferring is nothing new. We've always been able to attract transfer student athletes from PWI institutions. I myself was a Power Five transfer who attempted to transfer to Florida A&amp;M back in 2003. And of course, we all know what happened with that situation. But on this team currently, we have five or six Power Five transfers. So that's something that's always been in place. I think the conversation now, more so than ever, is the top-tier high school student athletes choosing HBCUs over, you know, Power Five or PWI schools. And that's something that I think is too premature to determine. The good thing is the conversation is out there. You do see now, top-tier student athletes like the young man out in California saying, hey, why not? You know, I was going to entertain the idea. And I even see prominent NFL and NBA players kind of backing those guys and saying, hey, why not? And so I think the key thing to consider is, you know, kind of what VP Gochet alluded to earlier, is we're in a prime position to do some special things, but it's going to take all of us to get it done. So if a young man who's a four-star, five-star student athlete says, hey, you know, I want to be around quote-unquote my people, well, we got to be able to provide him with something that's going to attract him to Florida A&amp;M. You know, because again, the idea that these guys are going to turn down multi-million dollar facilities and all the things that come along with being a Power Five student athlete to just come to an HBCU is not really realistic. But if we can show them a state-of-the-art facility, not necessarily the size of a Power Five institution, but one that's new, one that's clean, one that can provide the necessary essentials that a student athlete would want, that makes them feel that he can develop and mature and get to the next level. I think that's what we have to be looking forward to doing. So, you know, getting our facility up to date. The new locker room will go a long way in doing that. You know, getting our weight room to a level where they come in and they see state-of-the-art equipment, a training facility where they feel that they can rehab with some of the most up-to-date technologies that are out there. And we may not have as many benches or tables for treatment as again, some of our Power Five counterparts, but the ones we do have, they're fully serviced, they have all the state-of-the-art technology. Their nutrition that they can receive is on par with our PWI counterpart. So that's, I think, the challenge for us as HBCUs and FAMU in particular, to make sure like Courtney said, that we have our house in order so that when these top-tier student athletes do decide to visit, because they are. I have conversations now with a couple of four or five-star kids, one all the way out in California, who released his top five a month ago, and there were four PWIs in FAMU. I mean, four Power Fives, I'm sorry, four Power Five schools, and FAMU was the fifth. And he's already still talking about visiting, now he wants to come to a homecoming, obviously, so we've got to put on the show for him. But again, when we bring him to campus, we have to be able to show him a great experience. And I'll say this, and I'll transition to another question. I think that the unique part about FAMU and HBCUs is this. The thing that makes us unique is the overall experience, not just the football side of it. When we take these visits, and I was one of them, when we take these visits to, you know, these Power Five institutions and Division One PWIs, we only see the football side of things. You know, we see the bells and whistles, and we see all the opportunities for us to potentially go play professionally. But coming to an HBCU is unique because you get a well-rounded experience of everything, of our culture first and foremost, our culture and who we are as a people. So imagine bringing these student athletes to campus and they get the experience set Friday. They get the experience step shows and, you know, all the things, the March of 100, all the things that make FAMU and HBCUs so unique by everyone that's ever attended them. I think if we can pull all those resources together, then that will really give us an advantage in trying to attract these student athletes to our campuses as opposed to making the arms race as to who has the best facilities, which is what all the top-tier schools do. They just, you know, go back and forth as to who has the best facilities. But we do have a unique brand here that we can sell to our student athletes that will give them an opportunity to come back and feel welcome. And that's what we're really trying to do.
Okay, sounds good. The next question is from Derek Singleton. And Courtney, you may have answered this already. He's asked, how many SWAC games will be mandated to play? And what type PWI Regional FBS or other black FCS of out-of-conference games can we look forward to? And this is from the Central Mississippi Rattlers.
Yeah, so I don't necessarily want to pigeonhole ourselves and say that, hey, this is exactly what we're going to do. Because, you know, my thought processes as the AD here is really to create some unique opportunities for us. And so I definitely think that we will probably, you know, have, you know, a minimum of four home games. You know, I would love to, you know, do some things in the future with some other staples and some classics. There is value in playing certain, you know, PWIs for media exposure and, and quite frankly, opportunities for our kids to play. And I'll use this year as an example. We're playing in the Orange Blossom Classic, which is not a PWI, we're playing Albany State. But it's not very often at an HBCU level that you get to play in an NFL stadium. The same place that they played the Super Bowl this year. And so we talk about the student athlete experience. That, those are some of the unique opportunities that exist that I think we, you know, we're going to look to. You know, Coach Robert McCullum, you know, we've talked about taking our basketball teams on foreign tours. You know, not only exposing them to, you know, going and playing Power Five teams and picking up a check, but what is their student athlete experience? For some of our students, this may be the only time that they can go out of the country and experience something like that in their lifetime. And, you know, those are some of the things, unique experiences I've had at places. You know, I've played bowl games in the Bahamas and Hawaii. And those are life-changing experiences that our kids too deserve. And so I think you're going to see me be very, very strategic and try to position our kids and opportunities to do that. So it's probably a little premature for me to say who specifically, but, you know, we are going to mix it up a little bit. I know in future years, we've got a game with Florida and a couple of other, you know, big names that the contracts aren't, the ink on the contracts aren't done just yet. But again, we also look forward to establishing some new classics and some opportunities to get where our Rattlers are. And so, you know, we talked about it earlier, Yankee Stadium, you know, I think that's a life-changing experience. Our baseball team a couple of years ago played up at the Red Sox in Boston. And so, you know, again, just to reestablish those type of experiences, you know, for our fan bases. And to give us access in the places that quite frankly, we wouldn't always have access to.
Okay. The next question is from Erica Hill. We got a woman in this, in the question line up. What is the status of the All-In Campaign in terms of additional funds required?
Okay, all right, good question. So I am going to call Erica out on this one because she is a staunch supporter of FAMU Athletics. But I'll say this, four months ago, we launched the All-In Campaign in our highest level of giving, which is the Gaither Society. And it wasn't even a question, she wanted to be the first person in the Gaither Society. And so, you know, we appreciate Erica for what she has done and will continue to do for FAMU Athletics and our university as a whole. She loves this place and, you know, we greatly appreciate her support. But the status of the All-In Campaign, this week or last week actually, we crossed the $200,000 threshold of our $750,000 goal. And I believe today, we received another gift of $25,000. So I want to say unofficially, we're at 225. I think the report from Ms. Johnson and the foundation, she does a phenomenal job. We'll get it probably here in the next hour or so, so we're excited about it. But again, we have, we've made tremendous progress in really launching an athletic fundraising venture where people have really stepped up, you know, they showed up and showed out. And, you know, we launched several new giving platforms. So now we have Cash App. And I'll get that here in a minute, I can't remember it off the top of my head, but we'll share that for Rattler Nation. But we have Cash App, so there's no excuse to give now. And those funds go directly to the student athlete experience. So, you know, again, it goes directly to facility projects. We had 42 student athletes when COVID-19 hit who didn't have computers. You know, they're conducting, you know, trying to take exams on their smartphones and all of those type things. And so, you know, because of some of the contributions that were made to the Rattler Athletic Fund, we were able to cure those things. Because again, we talk about it, from a state and university level, we cannot, as an athletic department here in the state of Florida, we're not subsidized by the university. And so everything that our donors and those who support us give makes a difference. And so that Cash App is FAMU RAF for those who are interested. But again, day one, we launched that platform and we had 17 gifts come in immediately. 100% tax deductible, but your gifts make a difference. And so, again, if you're not coming to homecoming, send us that, you know. You know, Coach Simmons is not going to win a championship by himself. It takes resources. You know, when we invite kids to campus, he talked about recruiting. Hey, it costs us money to feed these kids, to show them campus, to fly them in on official visits, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's the business model. And so we're excited about that.
Okay, good stuff. So this is from Charles Lewis. Is the P3 Stadium Project still an option in the next three to five years?
It is. You know, there are some things that, obviously, we talked about kind of getting our house in order. You know, it really starts with delivering a balanced budget year in, year out. Because it's hard to jump into, you know, a new stadium at FAMU right now, and I'll put those figures out there. You're talking about $100 to $125 million. It's not a cheap venture. And, you know, again, we've got to come to the table with some of those dollars. But if you're not financially solvent to begin with, good luck getting a backer to finance you a new $120 million to build a facility. And so part of it is delivering a balanced budget, but it's definitely on the horizon. You know, we talked about Bragg Stadium and, you know, Rattlers like to brag. But it would be a detriment if we didn't have a stadium to even host homecoming, right? Those are some of the realities that I think in the near future, quite frankly, we're going to be facing. And so as we put these campaigns out there, it's not lip service, this is what it's going to take. You know, we talked about the field house, you know, our student athletes have been using the same lockers for 37 years. You know, it's like, okay, wait a minute, you know, so it's hard to recruit a star athlete and walk them into a locker room where they're seeing this thing that's older than they are. So that's a problem. And so initially, as the athletic director, we can't sit and wait on somebody to do it for us. We have to do these things and we can only do them with the support of our alumni, our donors, and people who believe in us. And again, so we're challenging people to do that, you know. A lot of people that you work for, they do matching gifts. Alright, so send it in, let us know, we'll do the legwork, but we just got to have those conversations. And so to answer Erica's question, we are in a good posture with the Rattler Athletic Fund, but we still got a ways to go.
Okay. So this is from Monique Love. And this is the million-dollar question that everybody's been talking about, not only in the Northeast region, but all over the different regions that make up the Alumni Association. Is there going to be a homecoming?
So y'all had to put me on the spot, right? Alright, well, I had to, I'm not going to take a sip from my FAMU League Cup, but, but no, we are planning to have homecoming. I mean, it is, it's going to be different. You know, matter of fact, I was speaking with Dr. Robinson on yesterday and we were talking about some things here and there. And we're trying to figure out, you know, in what format, what events, you know, we're planning to have the football game. But as I said earlier, we're going to have a limited capacity. That capacity is going to be reserved for a certain number of individuals. And so that will be different than the past. We may have events on campus, but, you know, I would plan on being prepared to wear a mask. You know, we're going to have to social distance. And so instead of having, you know, 30,000 or 40,000 people on campus, it may be like 10 or 15, I don't know. But we've got to make sure that we do it in a safe manner, whatever we do, that we operate within the guidelines set forth by the state and our university health officials. And there's a lot of people back at campus working really, really hard to put plans in place to be able to host events like homecoming. And I would commend Dr. Robinson and his leadership because there are some tough decisions that are being made. And, you know, I get a chance to brag on him, he's a bad man. Because, you know, a lot of times, you know, just, you know, it's kind of like, alright, the pressure of this decision. And, you know, he has really just been resolute through this entire process. But making decisions, allowing us as his delegates, as a vice president, to run our areas and to do them with, not only in excellence, but with care. And that's, that's one of the big things that, again, I'll kind of continue to say that. You know, we've got to make sure that we care for our student athletes and campus community. But there would give us nothing better to be able to host homecoming and people have a great experience.
That is very good to know. I'll make sure that I tell as many people as possible that we will be having homecoming. So thank you for that, Courtney. We have time for one or two more questions. This is from Natasha Williams. This is from Natasha Williams. Is there any opportunity for football cheerleaders to receive assistance? The team is made up of competitive All-Star cheerleaders with excellent tumbling and stunting skills.
Okay, you broke up on me. Can you repeat that one?
Yes, so this is from Natasha Williams. She's asking, is there any opportunity for football cheerleaders to receive assistance? The team is made up of competitive All-Star cheerleaders with excellent tumbling and stunting skills.
Absolutely. And, you know, I'll say, you know, I think we've ramped up a level of support for all of our programs since the launch of the Rattler Athletic Fund. It's no secret that, you know, with our budget challenges, you know, we have essentially, we've we've cut the level of support from our programs, you know. You know, we reduced two programs, our our men's tennis and men's cross country this past year because of financial challenges. And so our our goal, our new administration's goal and part of the Rattler Athletic Fund's mission is to be able to support and enhance these programs, including cheerleading. Because again, we serve a lot of special young people. You know, and I I'll brag on 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 football here for a second, you know, again, walking in, you know, you've got an offensive lineman who had the highest GPA in in all of SBI this past semester or the previous semester. You know, our men's basketball program had the only college athlete to be a pharmacy major in the country here at FAMU. You know, we we've had the the Woman of the Year for the MEAT, Woman of the Year in Sports, you know, was was a track student athlete and is now going to serve our country in the Army and is going to attend law school next. And so the caliber of student athletes and the product that we're producing, second to none. And so to that point, yes, we want to provide more resources for cheer, but all of our programs. And it can only be done, again, for for alumni and and people who who believe in what we're doing to support our mission.
Okay, we have the time for just one more question, and this is to Coach Simmons. How can you establish an opportunity for an educator to help you identify top top students for you to speak with? I think you've already really answered that question, but if you can just give a little snippet in terms of how you can use an educator to help you identify top students for you to speak with?
Is that question geared more towards recruitment as far as?
Yeah, a little bit towards recruitment, yes.
Okay, so so one thing, just be mindful of NCAA rules and regulations that that you as a as a supporter of FAMU Athletics, you know, knows the rules as far as interacting with 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 prospective students. If there are personal ties or, you know, you're an educator in the school, that's one thing. But to be a supporter of FAMU and you just know this family who has a big time player, you know, you can't go speak on our behalf in a recruitment procedure. That's that's against NCAA rules and regulations. So but if you have a a young man or in the case of a young woman for the women's programs that you feel like fits what we look for, I I think the first and foremost thing is to have those conversations with us as coaches. I've I've tried my best to make myself available to our fan base, to our alum, to know what we look for. You know, what our expectations are for student for student athletes, the type that we're looking for. And so once you know that and you feel like someone fits that mold, reach out to us, you know, reach out to 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 me if you have my number personally. Coach Ryan Smith, our recruiting coordinator, his information is on the website, all of our information. Our email addresses are on the website. Send an email with that young man, so young woman, in the case of woman's sports information. You know, school, sport, name, you know, measurables, but more importantly, you know, academic profile. I think that's one of the things that we got to make sure, especially when you're talking about out of state students. Mainly when we get those calls, it's about out of state kids, because obviously we recruit the state of Florida, so we know where most of the players are. But just be being mindful of of our budget, you know, being mindful of the ability for us as coaches to go to DC to scout a student athlete or to Chicago or Texas or California. That's not a drive. Some of our coaches are getting the car and driving to Orlando and Miami and Atlanta, but we're not driving to DC. I'm sorry. So we'll have to fly to DC to come to come evaluate talent. So I think that's just one of the things that we that we have to consider with that. But, you know, getting information to us is, you know, is is best you can. Follow up. We get, we get an amazing amount of of requests or, I guess, asks in that regard about potential student athletes. And so our emails are flooded daily with those type of B-bails. So if we don't respond right away, don't get discouraged, follow up, you know, follow up with us and give us a chance to really network and talk. I spoke with Tony Ezell yesterday, one of our former greats who obviously, you know, is doing phenomenal things in the community about some things that he mentioned to a student athlete to me. And so we do, we're open to those opportunities, but just know that, you know, we're in one, one, I'm biased. We're in the best state in the country as far as recruiting football talent. And so, you know, we'll go out of the state, but if I got to go to my boss, who's right below me on this Zoom call and say, I need $500 to fly to DC, they better be special, you know, they better be a program changer. So again, because we want to try to stay within our budget, which means getting the cars, driving to that to places in that four hour radius that we try to make our home recruiting base. So but don't feel like you can't ever reach out to us, talk to us. We're just normal human beings. We're not larger than life figures. We're just old football coaches who want to, you know, win and 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 put our young young men in a position to be successful. So if you see me on the streets, come talk to me. Be in the facility around the building, come talk to us. And we'll do our best job to to hear your voice, hear the the young men that you recommend to us. And if it works out, we'd definitely love to bring them to the Heights of Seven Hills so that we can get them a great experience, a well rounded experience, and send them back out to society to go change the world.
Excellent, excellent, guys. Thank you, Coach Willie Simmons and Courtney Gochet. This has been a very engaging evening with our conversations with Courtney, which is our first series held in the Northeast region with the Rattler Nation. I want to close out the question, the Q and A now, because we're almost at the top of the hour. So we want people to get additional information. So I want to thank Artitia for actually putting this together and for reaching out to you all, to making sure that the Northeast region heard from you all and heard from the staff in terms of what you guys are doing and how you're able to keep the legacy of Florida A&amp;M University a success. And what we should look forward to in the Northeast region, which sounds like a lot of things are exciting and that you guys are doing exciting things. So now I want to turn it over to Artitia to give the final remarks. Artitia?
All right. Well, thank you so much, Tangela. Thank you for moderating this evening. And thank you, A.D. Gochet and Coach Simmons for engaging with us. We really do appreciate how you continue to engage with the alumni and to take the time to speak with us in the Northeast region about our plans moving from the MEAT to the SWAC. And I will tell you, it does sound great. It would be wonderful if we could get into Yankee Stadium. I'll be the first one there. So we do appreciate the efforts to keep the Northeast region Rattlers engaged as we move on to our new conference, which would be best for the university overall. So we're definitely in your corner for supporting FAMU, whatever is best for our university. And that's what we do in the National Alumni Association. I do want to take this time to ask our Rattlers to do as our athletics department has asked us to support the athletics department with the Rattler Athletic Fund. In addition, we want you to join us in the National Alumni Association. So this is a new membership year coming up. If you haven't already, please renew your dues to the FAMU National Alumni Association by visiting www.famu.naa.org. If you're already a member, click Sign In, or if you're not a member, click Go and Join the NAA. And so if you're in the Northeast region states of Maine to Virginia, make sure you select Northeast Region and join one of our fabulous chapters here. If you don't have a chapter in your area, you can reach out to us, send an email to northeastrvp@famu.naa.org. So we have plenty of room for new chapters in our region. And so we look forward to you joining us as we support Florida A&amp;M University. So come strike with us in the Northeast region.
Thank you, Artitia. And so again, this is Conversations with Courtney, the first in a mini series that will take place. While you will learn about our transition from the MEAT to the SWAC. You will also hear from the Athletic Director, Courtney Gochet, in terms of the wonderful things that they are doing. With us closing out, I just want to give a big thank you to my Northeast Region Communications Team, Adrian Brown, Esther Coleman, and Armin Belcher for their support in tonight's program. I want to thank the Greater Baltimore Alumni Chapter, President Angela Sykes, and their communications team, Delicia Marshall and Pat Henley. I want to thank the Athletic Director, Courtney Gochet, and his leadership with hosting a very important platform, like Conversations with Courtney, to highlight FAMU Athletics. I would like to thank Ron Reeves, Associate Athletic Director, Revenue Generation, for helping Artitia and myself with the program's logistics for today. I want to thank FAMU Coach Willie Simmons for talking to the Rattler Nation about the exciting things that are happening with all things FAMU Athletics. And I want to thank the Northeast Alumni Chapters and the Rattler Nation in the Northeast region for supporting Conversations with Courtney. Please follow Courtney Gochet on Instagram. And Courtney, do you have your Instagram tag to share?
Yes, you can follow me on Twitter and Instagram at @courtneyg, and that is K O R T N E capital G.
Okay, good, very good.
Some of the the great things that are happening on the Heights of Seven Hills. And Artitia, just for the record, I am a life member of the National Alumni Association.
All right.
We are, we are excited to wear that badge.
That's what we're talking about.
Very, very good. And also, Courtney, you want to talk about the Facebook page and the Instagram and Twitter page for the Athletic Department? Do you guys have one that people can follow?
So we have, obviously, all of our programs have Twitter handles and Instagrams. But it's FAMU Athletics, at FAMU Athletics. And then we also have one for our fundraising arm, which is FAMU, excuse me, FAMU underscore RAF. And that stands for Rattler Athletic Fund. Again, you know, follow us. You'll see what we're trying to do. We're being very transparent in our initiatives, and then we're calling for help. So, you know, again, share what we've got going on on the Heights of Seven Hills. You know, we're excited about some of the good things that are happening in the direction that we're taking our program. Coach Willie Simmons, and I'm going to brag on him for a second, but what he's done off the field. He's personally taken taken on, you know, gun violence in our community. He's been very outspoken and was the 2019 Tallahassee Man of the Year. And so we're so blessed to have a great leader, not only coaching kids, but developing young men and women off the field, and and we're we're excited to have that. And so we're fortunate, you know, I challenge Rattler Nation. You know, not only do we have to provide resources for our kids, we got to be able to pay our coach before somebody comes and steals them away.
Yes.
You know, but again, just we we're excited to serve this university and so privileged to have alumni like yourself that are really helping us, you know, get where we need to go.
Thank you, Courtney, and thank you, Coach Willie Simmons, and congratulations on that award. Please follow the Northeast Region Facebook page and the Northeast Region's website. And the Facebook Live is again on the FAMU 1887 and the Northeast Region's Facebook page. This has been Tangela Richardson. I've enjoyed moderating tonight's conversations with Courtney. Thank you all, Rattler Nation, and have a safe and great evening. Good night, everybody.
Good night, Rattlers.
Night.
Happy Father's Day to all the fathers.
That's right. Thank you.
Good night.